Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, June 18th, 2013 Board of Supervisors meeting. We are going to begin with a flag salute led by Supervisor Euler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wondered if the clerk would be willing to read the statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, June 18th, 2013. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. (cough) Excuse me. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing done, we'll close public comment, bring it back for supervisor committee reports. Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. Yeah, this is not a committee report, but I think it's only fitting -- I think we're all aware that Joe Carroll passed away last Friday. He didn't like to be referred to as a journalist. He liked to think of himself as a newspaper man in the old tradition. He was a pillar of journalism, I'll use that word, here in the Auburn area. And he was a fine gentleman who I will miss dearly, and I'd just like to ask the board to take a moment of silence in remembrance because he was just an outstanding individual who will be dearly missed.
I think what we'll do is, I think Supervisor Wiegand has some comments about another stalwart individual of our community, and then we may --
Yeah, so also, we lost another pillar of Placer County's community, Janice Forbes, passed last week. So she was a great friend to me, great counselor, but she was an amazing entrepreneur. She was a founder of the Auburn Symphony, founding member of Auburn Community Bank, founding and first chair of the Sierra Business Council, a great Republican voice that reached across the aisle to work on conservation, got to be a great friend, had a chance to work with her at the Sierra Business Council. And I think, interestingly, both of those individuals were great journalists. Sierra Heritage Magazine, of course, was part of her dream, and both of them will have lasting influence and impact on Placer County.
Very good. Any other comments? Well, I do share those sentiments. They were both bemissed, really people that were able to move the agenda along. And Joe always had an interesting view of what goes on here in what he called Circus Maximus.[256.01][256.01](laughter) But he was really one of the last of the good old-time newspaper men. And so we will have a moment of silence in their memory, and we'll be adjourned in the meeting today in their memory as well. Now we'll go to consent agenda. Item 10E has been asked to be removed and brought back at a later date. Are there any other items on consent that need to be pulled? Supervisor Duran?
I would just like to make an introduction after the consent agenda's passed.
Okay. Did you have a --
Yeah, I don't need to pull an item, but I do have to announce County Council, Jerry Carden is going to describe this a little bit more fully, but for the public, I'm a current member of the Placer Arts Board, and we have a budget item regarding them. So Jerry's going to fill in the legal details.
All right.
Yeah. Our office reviewed that issue of Supervisor Wiegand's service as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Placer County Arts Council, and that service is uncompensated, and it's under the -- the board today is considering a contract with that organization under the Government Code provision regarding contracts, 1090. This is -- qualifies as a non-interest under 1091.588. So there's no restriction on Supervisor Wiegand's participation in this item.
And in the interest of transparency, I'm a board member emeritus, whatever that means. Guess I'm getting old.[374.31][374.31](laughter) I'm a gathering in, and there is an item on the board as far as, you know, that falls under the same. So is there anybody on the audience that wishes to pull anything? Sir, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Patrick Hodges, with the 5125 Girls' New Circle, Granite Bay. And I'm here to request that item 18 on the consent calendar be removed and put over to another day.
You're requesting that item 18 be removed from the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And not acted on by the board?
Pardon?
And not acted on by the board today?
Not today, yes, sir.
Okay. And I think there's a member of the audience that wants to ask the board to proceed on that item.
So is there anyone else that wants to address this issue?
Yes, I'm Bob Sinclair. I represent Garrett Call, who was the purchaser of this property at the tax sale that's involved in the application. And we would like the board, whether it's on the consent agenda or separately addressed, we would like the board to proceed with the action on the petition today.
Okay, thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest at this point we all go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar absent item 18 and item, was it 10E Echo?
Okay.
That was also to be removed.
That's a department item.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's a department item.
Oh, it was a department? I'm sorry.
10E is a department.
If that was a department item, then we don't have to worry about that right now.
So is your intention to --
To approve consent absent item 18, and then at the chairman's pleasure --
Bring it back for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, there's been a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar absent item 18. All those in favor, please say aye.
And we need a roll call, sorry.
Oh, this is a roll call, though. Thank you.
Euler?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll go ahead and call item 18 for discussion. Is that your intent, Supervisor Wiegand? Or Euler?
Item 18 is here. It's a legal requirement in the matter of a tax sale that if the property owner whose property was sold wishes to file an action in the Superior Court over that, over the sale of their property for whatever reason, they have to first petition the board to rescind the tax sale. And that provision also requires county council consent. And it's designed as if there's some irregularity in the tax sale, so that the board can rescind the tax sale on advice of the Treasury Tax Collector and on the consent of the county council. In this case, our office could find no reason to rescind the tax sale. There was -- it was all done according to statutory provisions. All notices were provided, and I think Mr. Hodges acknowledges that. So it's on consent because this is like a, sort of like a claim, where it's a prerequisite for him filing a lawsuit is to petition the court, petition the board for rescinding it. So it was on the agenda for rejection of the claim. Mr. Hodges wanted to, originally wanted to speak to that, and I guess now he wants to have it removed. He has, under the statute, one year to petition the board to rescind the tax sale, and he's still within that one year, one year for the board to act on it. And then he has one year after that to file his litigation. Apparently, there's some litigation that's taken place already between the property owner and the person who purchased the property at the tax sale.
So just to clarify, counsel, if we can either keep it here by denying the request or we can send the ship off by granting the request, correct?
Yeah, well, you can deny -- What's before the board today is to deny the request.
Right.
Because there's no basis for it.
And that's what I'm saying, is that if we do that, it goes --
Yeah, then it can go back to the Superior Court.
Right. The question is, is do we want to keep it here or do we want to ship it off?
So do I hear a motion on this item?
I believe we have folks that would like to speak to the item.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak to the item further?
I did hear what was said.
Supervisor Euler requested this, wanted to know if anybody here wanted to speak to the item further.
Yes. There's a matter that's been set for a motion in the Santucci Court, Department 43, that should be heard before the county council has all the facts that it needs to reach its conclusions about the validity of this, what's taken place up until now. So the reason I want to clear it over is so we can have the hearing in the Superior Court and get that taken care of, and then provide the county council with the results of that hearing.
Jerry, if I, just to, if I heard correctly, in order for it to have its proper jurisdiction in the court, we need to reject this --
Yeah, and he's referring to litigation between himself and the person who purchased the property at the tax sale. He's still living in the property, and that action was to evict him from the property so that the person who purchased the property at the tax sale could conclude their purchase.
Just for clarification, our rejection of this today, if we indeed take that action, has no bearing on the litigation currently in court?
That's correct. I don't see that it can have any -- and it has no bearing on his own litigation that he might want to file in Superior Court because, again, it's a statutory prerequisite that he can't proceed in Superior Court on his action against the county to rescind the tax sale without the board acting on the petition.
And again, Jerry, you have, your office has determined that what was done here was consistent with all of the state statutes.
Yes, we saw no basis to challenge the validity of this tax sale, and frankly, Mr. Hodges has stipulated as much in his action in the Superior Court.
Sure. And my position is, is that if we've done our diligence on the documentation, that we need to let the ship sail, and if the court finds something otherwise down the road, they're doing their job in correcting it. So that's what my motion would be.
May I make one more comment to the county council? The basis for the hearing in the Superior Court has to do with the document that you were given by Mr. Sinclair, that in part led you to the conclusion that the board should not consider this matter. That's, that document is the subject of a further hearing here. So I think you should have the results of that hearing because the agreement that I signed would be quashed.
Again --
I just emphasize it's a hearing outside the jurisdiction of this matter.
Yeah, and if the court does find some reason, they will issue a TRO of some type to stop what's going on. So I get what you're talking about, sir, but unfortunately, we've done our diligence, and it's for the court to decide, so that's --
Supervisor Duran, was that a motion to reject?
That was a motion prior, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve item 18 on consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
You've prefaced the motion to approve, and it's a request to rescind.
Okay.
To deny.
To reject. Okay.
Maybe that needs to be clarified.
Okay. Did you want to change that motion?
No, I think it was properly stated, since the recommendation is that we reject the petition.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you're all good. Thank you, thank you. We have a closed session item that is time-sensitive, and so we're going to go ahead and go into closed session until 9:30 timed item comes forward, so.
If I may, Chairman, if I could make the introduction?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, we approved a, well, for the last year and a half, I have shouldered, along with Terry Avoli, the challenges of this office through various outreach and input from the public, and I have now wanted to introduce Christina Rivera, who's going to be helping District One Office fulfill its responsibility to the public. So Christina?
Oh, that's who that is. Oh, okay.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, thank you. That's right. We're going to go into closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session and convene in closed session as the board of the Placer County Successor Agency for the former redevelopment agency to discuss the item on the closed session agenda on anticipated litigation.
The Board has returned from closed session where they convened as the successor agency for the former redevelopment agency and heard a status report and gave direction to staff, then adjourned as the successor agency. That concludes the closed session report.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to our 9:30 timed item, Sheriff's Office Booking Jail Access and Incarceration Fees. Judy Laporte presenting. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Holmes, members of the Board. Judy Laporte with the Sheriff's Office. The item before you requests that you conduct a public hearing and consider adopting the ordinance that's attached, adjusting several of the Sheriff's Office booking jail access fees and incarceration fees. The changes are based on an annual study that the Sheriff's Office has conducted to ensure that these fees recover our costs to the extent allowed. The study this year was conducted by MGT of America and we have representatives from the firm here in the audience. If you have any questions of them or myself, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Hey, any questions from Board members? Supervisor Dr. Casazur.
My, it's more of a comment than a question. In the future, it's helpful to me, I mean obviously the information is contained within the report that was done, but a lot of folks beyond the Board and our staff know how to access that kind of information and so when we look at items, when the public looks at items, having the information in the staff report that delineates what it was and what it's moving to.
Okay.
Again, we can dig into the report and find it and see that we're looking at a $5 increase, but when in the staff report all we're showing is where we're ending up, it doesn't give the kind of the order magnitude of the increase. And so I think just helpful for public consumption for people to have ready access to that information.
Certainly.
Supervisor Duran, your light is on. Did you have a comment?
I'm good.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the Board on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring this item back for action. Move, approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item one, Sheriff's Office Booking Jail Access and Incarceration Fees. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you. We'll now move to our 9:40 timed item, Adult System of Care, Establish Drug Testing Fees and Amend Mental Health Service Fees. Ms. Baumann.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Maureen Bama with the Adult System of Care. This morning I'm asking you to take three actions. One, to conduct a public hearing to consider the establishment of fees for required drug testing conducted as part of county-operated substance abuse treatment programs and amend existing fees for certain other mental health and other services. Two, to adopt a resolution setting annual fees, services pursuant to Placer County Code Section 2.116.111. And three, to adopt an ordinance amending the same section of the Placer County Code regarding fees for adult and children's system of care services. Health and Human Services administered the mental health and substance abuse treatment programs for Placer County and state and federal regulations require the establishment of fees for services based on ability to pay, but not to exceed the actual cost of, not to exceed the actual costs incurred, as well as to establish a uniform rate established for government and private payers. It also requires entities that receive this funding to establish systems for eligibility determination, billing and collections. Placer County Mental Health and Other Fees were established in 2005 and the Adult System of Care has now established a licensed substance abuse treatment program in order to centralize an assessment center and consolidate all funding streams for increased efficiencies. Prior to this year, drug testing, a component of the substance abuse treatment program, was funded entirely by the state and federal dollars. However, this funding has now been significantly reduced and county staff now provides assessment, referrals and case management, as well as direct treatment services funded by a combination of federal, state, local and private funds. The proposed resolution amends the current mental health and other fees and establishes the annual fees for drug testing, as well as the federally mandated sliding scale fee schedule. The proposed testing fee is based on the actual cost of drug testing which is provided by an outside provider, outside vendor. The testing cost is for all testing and collections for an individual that occurred during a particular program. So the sliding fee schedule reduces this fee based on a person's income and number of dependents. The proposed amendment to the Section 2.116.111 of the Placer County Code is designed to make minor technical changes only and does not materially change the current ordinance. The resolution will collect not in a great amount of dollars, but we think it's significant that people do pay their fair share for the treatment programs that they participate in. So the fees are estimated to collect $25,000 annually. It's a bit of an estimate because we haven't actually done the collection, but just based on past kind of activities. The methodology and fiscal detail used to establish these fees are on file with the Clerk of the Board. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but recommend taking the action proposed.
Any questions from Board members? Supervisor Uller?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As I'm looking at the adjustments in the fees, particularly those for the outpatient services, fairly uniformly increasing about 26 percent, but given that we haven't made an adjustment, it looks like in four years, so about 4 percent, excuse me, 6 percent per year average. That is, I'm guessing, reflective of...
Actual cost.
Okay. The one notable change, of course, is the crisis intervention, which is increasing over 100 percent in cost. And I'm wondering what, why such a dramatic price driver there?
So the services and the cost of the services are based on the actual cost of services divided by the actual units of cost for particular services. So I don't have that particular detail, but it would be that formula and I would be happy to get back to you to help explain, you know, what exactly changed in terms of the service? Because it could have been amount of services that are provided into the certain amount of costs that are dedicated to that versus other dynamics in terms of just increasing costs.
Sure. And then what, in terms of that, in terms of that reimbursement rate, to whom does that get directed billed? So for instance, the crisis intervention, I'm just trying to come up with kind of a real world scenario where we are actually billing at a rate of $7.15 a minute for crisis intervention.
Well, Medi-Cal would be one of the primary sources of our billing structure. So the rates apply to all of our payer sources. So Medi-Cal would be probably the biggest payer source that we would have.
All right. And then, final question, under the substance abuse treatment services, the drug testing annual, we're looking at a cost of $761 per person?
So to explain that, it isn't, we didn't want to set up a, you know, come and pay per test that you were delivered. So we assume that you're going to have a testing, an average number of tests for the duration of a program, which is approximately a year, and so many tests per month on a decreasing schedule. So we establish what the whole program would be, so they would have established this is what that part of the program is going to cost.
Okay. And something like that is typically as a result of some kind of court order in order to find somebody in that position where they're participating in a program?
A lot of the programs are through Proposition 36, which establishes programs, like drug card programs. And so, I mean, we do do testing for voluntary programs, but I would say a fair number of people that are in the testing program, getting tested are actually court ordered or on probation.
And how many of the folks that find themselves in that position are actually able to write a check for 761 bucks upfront for those kinds of tests?
Not very many. That's why we do have the sliding scale. And again, we just think it's important for them to pay their, you know, fair share of what the costs are and contribute in terms of that responsibility, based on their income.
Thank you.
Supervisor Duran, did you have a... Okay, all righty. All right. Any other Board member comments? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearings. Anybody from the public wish to address the Board on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve item number two, Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care, Establish Drug Testing Fees and Amend Mental Health Services Act. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. The item is moved. We'll now move to Department item number five, Administrative Services Procurement, Renew, Blanket Purchase Order, Public Works Fleet Operations. Mr. Wood and Mr. Mann. Mr. Wood and Mr. Manning.
Good morning Chairman Holmes, Supervisors. We're here today to request from you, a request to renew a blanket purchase order based on a California competitive lead bid contract with US Bank for credit card fuel purchases. With me is Mr. John Manning from the Procurement Division, and he'll be presenting the balance of the item.
Good morning. These credit cards will be used for fueling county-owned and lease vehicles when staff is unable to utilize one of the county card lock fuel facilities located within the Auburn, Loomis, Rockland, Roseville, and Lincoln areas. The State of California's contract with US Bank National Association ND was awarded as the result of a competitive bid solicitation, and the current contract extension is effective through October 31st of 2016. The Department of Public Works Fleet Services Division administers the county's fuel card programs and requests that the county utilize the state's contract as permitted by the purchasing policy manual. We request your Board's approval of this recommendation, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Supervisor Duran.
Yes, as there probably no credit cards are one of the ways that can get out there and don't have a whole lot of internal controls, what type of process do you have to ensure that those cards are used for the intended purpose?
You want to refer to Chuck?
Actually, sir, what, these cards are provided for employees as well as they're also tied to vehicles. So they, you know, they're very limited in the use that they can make of them. They're not a standard credit card that you and I would have in our pocket and could go anywhere with. So they do have fairly good controls on them, and it's one of the things that we work with the department to ensure that they're properly restricted or limited to prevent that kind of excess use.
And is there one that you fill out, that you put down, mileage, or what?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you track that mileage with the vehicles? They're also tracked with, the different types of purchases that you can make with that card are very, they're very managed and you can't just, it wouldn't be like you would be able to just take the card and use it for three weeks and not be...
And you can access the data fairly readily?
Yes, we can access it online.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Board members? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Department item number five, Renew Blanket Purchase Order, Public Works Fleet Operations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, we'll move to item 5B, Award Bid, OEM Auto Parts, Multi-Department.
Yes, sir. This is a request to approve a competitive bid number 10242 for original equipment manufactured auto parts. We also have within this a request to approve negotiated agreements with firms that elected not to respond to the competitive bid. With me, Mr. Manning will present the balance of this, and then we'll be happy to stand for any questions you have.
Thank you.
The Department of Public Works Fleet Services Division, the Department of Facility Services, the Placer County Fire Department, and the Placer County Sheriff's Office all require annual blanket purchase orders for the purchase of OEM, which is Original Equipment Manufacturer Auto Parts, and dealer services on an as-needed basis. The Department's current blanket purchase order agreements expire on June 30th, 2013. Procurement Services prepared and solicited invitation for bids number 10242 for the various types of original equipment manufacturer auto parts and services required by the various departments. Four bids were received from vendors who are not certified to receive local vendor preference credit and did not offer any prompt payment discounts. Procurement recommends awarding 10 of the bid line items specified in bid number 10242 to the vendors specified in the agenda item. Procurement Services also successfully negotiated renewal agreements for the remaining OEM brands that did not receive bids. All but five of the vendors listed in the agenda item agreed to renew at the same pricing and terms. The proposed price increases from the five vendors were determined to be reasonable based on satisfactory contract performance and compliance with the county's requirements. We request your Board's approval of this recommendation, and we're available to answer any questions you might have on this.
Thank you. Any questions from Board members? Seeing none, any questions from audience members regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board. Moved and seconded to approve item 5B, Award Bid, OEM Auto Parts, Multi-Department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you, the item is moved. Where are we here? Let's move to item six, Board of Supervisors Minutes for May 21st, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Minutes of May 21st, 2013. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention, Supervisor Duran. What do we have on here? Getting kind of dizzy. Item seven, Facility Service Professional Service Maintenance Operation of the Auburn Jail Facilities. Mary Dietrich.
Chairman Holmes, members of the Board, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services. The item for your consideration this morning is a request for approval of professional services for maintenance and operation at the Auburn Jail facilities. Specifically, we're requesting that your Board approve an agreement with CGL Kitchell Facility Management, Inc., for professional services for maintenance and operation at the Auburn Jail facilities in an amount not to exceed $495,000 for a 12-month period beginning July 1, 2013, including additional services with no new net county costs to the county. We request that you approve a resolution delegating authority to the Director of Facility Services to execute the agreement upon final review and approval by County Council and Risk Management, and then any subsequent associated documents or change orders that might result as a use of the additional services. Dennis Salter is with me today, and he will be providing you the details of this contract, but I would just add that the recommendation is in furtherance of the Department's efforts and commitments to provide the most cost-effective means of providing services to the facilities that are under our management and control and is consistent with the contract that is currently in place for the jail facility down in the South Placer Justice Center. So with that, Dennis?
Good morning Chairman Holmes, members of the Board. Dennis Salter, Building Maintenance Superintendent. As a result of ongoing staff attrition in the Building Maintenance Division of Facility Services, it has become increasingly difficult to provide the necessary levels of service and emergency coverage at the Auburn Jail facilities. The need to provide or prioritize staff assignments to attend to secure facilities invariably results in the reduction of service to other departments and deferment of critical maintenance activities. This issue reached a critical point in August of 2012, when all four of the staff assigned to the Auburn Jail were unavailable to work due to personal medical issues. The Auburn Jail currently requires 4.5 FTEs of building maintenance staff, including assigned staff and other trades and supervision. At a minimum, there's immediate need for the equivalent of two additional FTEs in order to maintain sustainable levels of service at the jail. On April 9th, 2013, your Board approved a consulting services agreement with Kitchell for professional services contract to provide maintenance and operations at the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility. Kitchell has an extensive nationwide background in maintaining correctional facilities and has demonstrated their considerable expertise in providing invaluable assistance to the commissioning and project management teams and their support of the South Placer facility. To address the critical staffing deficiencies I described above at Auburn, Facility Services requested that Kitchell also provide a proposal specific to providing maintenance and operation at the Auburn facility. By retaining Kitchell, current building maintenance staff will better be able to deliver expected levels of service at other facilities and address a backlog of deferred maintenance projects. This professional services contract is anticipated to complement current levels, or current contracts, for fire alarm, building automation systems, security, generator service, and other services. The contract includes options subject to approval of the Director of Facility Services for extension of duration and scope. The proposed action is consistent with, as Mary indicated, consistent with your Board's policy direction to augment staff with private contracts. The current value, the contract value for the first year of service totals $446,900. This is for direct services, accepting the additional services. The first-year charges are comprised of labor, one-time costs, including the installation of software and implementation of the computerized maintenance management system, and services of an inventory team and annual, also including annual costs for uniforms, office expenses, equipment rentals, tools, materials, et cetera. Subsequent years do not include a $30,000 one-time cost for software setup and the inventory team. Facility Services recommends the additional services to be included to cover any unanticipated chargeable services outside the scope of preventative and corrective maintenance service. The recommended amount of additional services is $48,100 for the duration of the contract. Comparative analysis of the costs indicate that the operations and maintenance services contemplated by this contract is less than the county's current cost to provide similar levels of service. These, additional features provided by the Kitchell contract include barcoding of all substantial equipment in the building and enhanced computerized maintenance management system for tracking all costs to be coordinated with the South Placer facility as well. By using the same system at both facilities, correctional staff will be using a common set of data, including documenting damages caused by inmates. Statewide, county jails have experienced increasing damage, increased damage caused in part by AB 109 changes in the number and types of inmates in county jails. The proposed contract and the computerized maintenance management system is planned to efficiently correct problems as well as provide the Sheriff with support for their ongoing program of seeking restitution from inmates who caused damage to facility services. I think Mary has some closing comments.
Of this contract, $450,000 of this amount is currently budgeted in the Building Maintenance 2013-14 budget. To fully fund the additional services, or mostly $45,000 of the additional services, we are recommending a final budget adjustment in the 13-14 budget to fully fund this amount to the full amount of $495,000. As indicated, this is at no net county cost because these costs are less than those that would be otherwise incurred by the county and are budgeted in Building Maintenance's budget. So with that, we're available to answer any questions, and do recommend approval of this action.
Okay, Supervisor Duran.
Yes, thanks Mary for bringing this forward. My only concern, and it's a semantic one, when you say maintenance and operation, it kind of sounds like we're privatizing our force out there. So I just want to make clear to the public that the Sheriff and their correctional officers are still operating the facility and that this only relates to maintenance and some other support services. Is that correct? Is that accurate?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yes, thank you. Mary, I had just three quick questions. So in terms of the fiscal impact, while I understand that the total costs are expected to be less than doing this through county staff, there is a supplemental $45,000 request. What happens if you don't get that?
I, it would limit our ability to have and deal with additional services that may come up that are beyond the scope of the contract, and there are things that occur at the jail that Kitchell may be the most appropriate group to deal with, but it may be outside of that maintenance scope. So we may be able to bring those services otherwise externally through our own county staff or by other contracts if that amount were not approved.
But you would expect to achieve those savings through those additional services, that $48,000?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my other two questions are just quickly, one that I would suggest that we at least do a quick review of this each year on an annual basis to make sure that our expectations about the cost savings are actually met in reality. I think it's important that we verify that where we think we're going to get savings we actually do. And then, just the numbers generally through the fifth year, are those based on expectations that we will actually see some sort of decline out in the jail facility itself because of the opening of the South Placer Jail?
I think that the reduction in costs is the elimination, it's a little bit of funny math, but I think it is a reduction in the one-time cost plus a little bit of escalation. So it's not a, it is not a reduction necessarily for the efforts and movement towards South Placer, but the contract does have the ability to be modified so that if there are changes at the Auburn Jail, this, the work under this contract can be adjusted or even, or even terminated.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions from Board members? Seeing none, is there already one in the audience that wishes to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. It's been moved and seconded to approve item seven, Facility Services Professional Services Maintenance and Operation of the Auburn Jail Facilities. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you. We'll now move to our 10 o'clock timed item, Public Works Community Development Resource Agency, The Grove at Granite Bay. Mr. Costa. Oh, and Rick, Rick here.
Yeah, good morning Chairman, and members of the Board. Rick here with the Community Development Resource Agency. I'm here to just give you a brief introduction on the project, which is located in Granite Bay, and it's called The Grove at Granite Bay ironically, and as well as introduce you to the staff who will be making the presentation. This project is located at the southwest corner of Olive Ranch Road and Berg Street, and it is comprised of 32 single-family units, six common area lots, and publicly maintained roadways. This is a two-part item before your Board. The first part will be in regards to the creation of a new zone of benefit. This item will be presented to you by the Department of Public Works Deputy Director Bob Costa, and the second item, item 3B, is in regards to the recognition of the final map, and this item will be presented to you by the Community Development Resource Agency's Deputy County Surveyor Leslie Amesbury. So with that, I would like to move to Bob Costa for his presentation on item 3A.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Costa.
Good morning, Bob Costa, Department of Public Works. County service area zones of benefit are intended to fund extended public services, and they're frequently used in conjunction with new subdivision development. Conditions of approval for The Grove at Granite Bay subdivision require the formation of a zone of benefit to fund roadway surface treatments, storm drainage maintenance, and street lighting. As prescribed by law, an engineer's report was prepared to describe the extended services to be provided, establish an appropriate budget and service schedule, as well as defining the assessment methodology. An annual assessment of $892 per lot is being proposed within this zone of benefit. In accordance with the requirements of Proposition 218, ballots have been provided to the owners of record for the property. Our request is that your Board first conduct a public hearing, then consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and if supported, adopt a resolution creating Zone of Benefit number 198, and setting charges to provide the extended public services that were discussed.
Okay. Any questions from Board members? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to address the Board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board.
Quick question, Chairman.
Yes.
Any gates involved here at all?
I'm sorry.
Any gates involved in this?
If there were gates, they would just call a comment. I can answer that. You would hear from the phone.
All right, all right. Okay. How many have?
I get a rise up here.
All righty then. Okay, so we closed the public hearing, and I think we're going to bring it back for, oh, hold up. Any protests, tabulated ballots, et cetera? Is that something that we need to ask you about?
Um, yes, one ballot was received in favor.
Okay, thank you. All righty then, now it's time for action. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval of the establishment's zone of benefit 198.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Public Works established on the benefit 198 in County Service Area 28. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, thank you. Now we'll move to item 3B, Community Development Resource Agency Engineering, Leslie Amesbury.
Good morning.
Morning.
This item for your consideration is the final map for The Grove at Granite Bay. With your very recent approval of the County Service Area Zone of Benefit, all of the conditions of approval have been met, so we're asking for your approval to accord the final map and the subdivision improvement agreement. Do you have any questions at this time?
Any board member have any questions? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Move approval, recordation, final map, and the associated subdivision improvement agreement.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 3B, Community Development Resource Agency Engineering. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you very much. Wow, just almost on time for the 10:15 Facility Services Environmental Engineering Annexation of Morgan Downs, formerly known as Silver Creek, property to County Service Area 28, Zone 173 Dry Creek. I think I'm about 30 seconds off pace. I see that Bill Zimmerman is not with us, but Dave Atkinson will be presenting. I'm losing board members. What's the deal? Did you say something?
I don't know.
Must be very controversial. Well, we've got a few seconds there. I just want to make sure that I'm on time at 10 o'clock, according to the official counting clock. All right, please proceed, Mr. Atkinson.
Chairman Holmes, members of the board, Dave Atkinson with Facility Services. I'm here this morning to present a request for your board to hold a public hearing and consider the annexation of the properties making up the Morgan Downs subdivision in West Placer into County Service Area 28. The property owner, Standard Pacific Homes, is requesting that the two properties totaling 28 and a half acres located on the corner of PFE Road and Willerga Road be annexed into County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173, also known as the Dry Creek Sewer, for the purposes of providing sewer service to the 78-lot development known as Morgan Downs. For your convenience, there's a location map in your board package in addition to the required legal description of the properties. Wastewater for the Dry Creek Sewer Shed is conveyed by a county-maintained sewer collection system, and wastewater treatment is performed by the City of Roseville as part of the South Placer Wastewater Authority Operations Agreement. This annexation request was first approved by your board in February of 2007 under the name Silver Creek. The annexation was never completed as the developer failed to pay the $276,666 in fees within the one year as required. In March of 2008, the Silver Creek developer confirmed to the county staff that they would not be making the payment due to the downturn in the housing market, and acknowledged that the property will need to reapply for annexation in the future. Based upon the request of the new property owner, Standard Pacific Homes, county staff completed all of the necessary postings at locations around the property and in the local newspaper. If your board approves this request, the property owner will have one year to pay the new fee of $315,666 as a reimbursement to County Facilities District Number One in accordance with the reimbursement agreement approved by your board in October of 2001. The reimbursement is based on the 78 entitled lots at a cost of $4,047 per lot. An environmental impact report was approved in 2006 and includes an analysis of the annexation of the property into the Dry Creek Sewer. Thank you for consideration of this request, and again, staff is asking your board to hold a public hearing and then consider approval of the attached resolution annexing the Morgan Downs property into County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173. Happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Ullrich has a question.
Just out of curiosity, having really nothing to do with the approval of this particular item, just curious as to where they are in the processing of the in-track improvements on this. Has even any of that begun?
They are in the process of having improvement plans put together. It's actually their hope to start moving dirt this summer as, as they've reported to us.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions from board members?
Any gates?
All righty, this is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing. I'm tired of these doggone public hearings, but anybody in the public wish to address the board on this item? All righty, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. It's moved and seconded to approve item four, Facility Services Environmental Engineering Annexation of Morgan Creek Downs. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you. We'll now move to item eight, Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care Physician Umbrella Contracts. Ms. Bowman.
Good morning again, St. Maureen Bowman with the Adult System of Care. This morning, I have two items for your consideration, items 8A and 8B in your agenda, and I think it'll be easier if I just take them one at a time. So the first item is to request your approval of a two-year umbrella contract for fiscal year 13 through 15 with Dr. Shchima and Kangura, who, for an overall amount not to exceed $290,000, that includes $127,600 of county general funds. And authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the resulting contracts and subsequent amendments up to 10% of the umbrella contract amount. Dr. Shchima and Kangura are uniquely qualified to provide necessary and mandated comprehensive medical services to patients that are admitted into our acute inpatient psychiatric services at Placer County Psychiatric Health Facility that we call the PUF. These specialized services are provided by two physicians who provide this specific service in our area. State regulations require that medical care is provided to each client admitted to the PUF within 24 hours. This includes a history and physical, medical sick call, review and monitoring of medication regimes, medical consultation, and coordination of patient health care with other health care providers. The Adult System of Care has determined that this contract is the most cost-efficient method of ensuring that all necessary medical services are provided while Placer County residents are admitted and in treatment at the PUF. We have an umbrella contract because this way the two doctors can work together, and so we don't predict exactly who will do how much of the business, and they work it out and are responsive to our, again, 24-hour response. But the work of these physicians is supervised by the Medical Director, Dr. Ogadnawitz. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval of the item.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, any audience members have any issues with this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. It's been moved and seconded to approve item eight, Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care Physician Umbrella Contracts. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. We'll move to item 8B, Adult System of Care Contracts Mental Health for 2013-15.
Thank you. The second item for your consideration is the approval, is the approval to continue the comprehensive array of mandated intensive mental health services for Placer County residents in the total amount of $10,816,000. That includes approximately $2 million of county general fund costs for 13-14 fiscal year 13-14. We're asking again for you to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to approve, to approve the amendments that are shown in item F and G below, and subsequent amendments of the overall contracts up to 10% of the total contract amount, or 49,999, whichever is less. So these contracts include a one-year contract with Telecare Corporation and ANCA Behavioral Health for our PUF and Crisis Residential, two-year contracts for 13-15 with County Villa Merced Behavioral Health and Willow Glen Care Center. County Villa Merced Behavioral Health is a locked facility, and Willow Glen is not locked, but it is a secure facility. And a one-year contract for 13-14 with Turning Point Community Programs, and then an amendment for the current year for Turning Point Community Programs in order to increase services for specific outpatient services that we're requesting them to add. And lastly, an amendment with the Eldorado County Inpatient Psychiatric Services, a PUF that they have operated, that we use as an overflow when we have no capacity at our current operated PUF. Placer County Adult System of Care provides unique and mandated male health services to approximately 5,000 adults each year. The contracts, the services provided through these contracts are for those persons that have the very most acute and chronic mental health conditions who need either hospitalization, residential, or intensive services in the community. Essential life-saving care for adults with severe mental disorders who are unable to provide for their own basic needs are now at risk to themselves or others requiring 24-hour supervised care. They receive the 20-hour supervised care and intensive services in the Telecare Eldorado County Psychiatric Health Facilities, the ANCA Crisis Residential, or Willow Glen, or County Villa Merced. So those are the, really, the long-term hospital services. And just in giving you an update about the service continuum, I would give you an update that our PUF, although we see about the same number of people, 735 per year, in this last year, we've actually seen more acute patients, and we've had a longer length of stay. So this longer length of stay impacts the number, the amount of capacity we have in the PUF, and we've had to make some adjustments. One of the things we've done is really tried to better utilize our ANCA Crisis Residential, which is 24-hour staffed and still acute, but unlocked. And so we've been doing a good job in the last six months in terms of really trying to help people be in that program, if that's at all possible. So that's worked in terms of really trying to maximize the continuum. In our locked services, just to give you a sense of numbers, we see about 41 people that are in long-term locked facilities. We work really hard to get those people back into our community, and with the work that we've done for those people in the last year did come back into the community to be integrated into a more community setting. Our Turning Point Program with their intensive outpatient program, I've talked to you about this before, it's really wrapping services around somebody that would have been in a hospital otherwise or in a long-term facility, and so really providing all the services they need to keep them safe in the community. Those programs, we see about 115 people per year in those programs, and in our last data, 71% of that population had no need for hospitalizations during the year, 84% had no jail bed day stays, and 95% avoided homelessness. So we continue to get great outcomes for that intensive services. We would recommend the continuation of the service model. We think it's the most cost-effective and results-based option for Placer County, and so I would be happy to answer any questions. Mohawk alcohol drug board did approve it at their May meeting. Happy to answer questions and recommend approval.
Supervisor Durant.
Yes, more of a clarification, the total net costs for fiscal year 13-14 at $2,183,923. This isn't a budget revision. You're just asking to spend the money.
Right. It's in the budget already. Thank you.
Supervisor Ullrich.
You indicated Willow Glen is not locked, but it's secured. Does that mean it's gated?
Yes.
Sticking with the theme.
Okay, that's number three. That's it, okay? No more.
Delightful.
Put you guys in a gate here in a minute.
Supervisor Montgomery.
I'm perfectly happy to move forward with this today. I am just going to give the pitch I give every year, which is if there's any way moving forward in future years to find some of these facilities are fairly remote, difficult for family members to get to, just continue looking more locally so people do have access to, you know, their loved ones who might be in these facilities.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for the board for action, and it's my understanding we can take all these in one motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8B, one. Items A through G, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you. We'll now move to item 8C, Children's System of Care Contract First Kids Child Abuse Prevention Services. Mr. Connect.
Thank you, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. Supporting and educating Placer parents and families about healthy parenting, child abuse prevention, and treatment for victims is a longstanding goal of the department and its partners. For many years, Kids First, our primary child abuse prevention council and key partner, has delivered timely and effective prevention and outreach services using local media and community events, and providing counseling and parent education through its family resource centers. Kids First is also a valued partner in the very successful delivery of Placer's alternative CPS differential response modality. In the most recently completed year, Kids First delivered these prevention services to over 2,500 families. These effective strategies have been one of the major drivers to see SOX's effective reduction of foster care and group home placement over the past six years. The $69,000 in county funds with $37,000 in children's trust fund monies leverages an additional nearly $400,000 in state and federal support. I'd be happy to take any questions and otherwise recommend your approval for the contract.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, any questions from audience members regarding this issue? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8C, Children's System of Care Contract First Kids First Child Abuse Prevention Services. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you. Item nine, Probation, JJCPA CRC Program Contact Renewal. Mr. McManus.
Thank you, Chairman. Morning, board.
Morning.
I am David McManus, the Assistant Chief Probation Officer, and we're here today to ask the board to authorize a one-year contract renewal with Coine and Nia Family Services to provide an array of comprehensive services to at-risk youth and families here in Placer County. This contract renewal would allow Coine and Nia to provide emergency shelter and counseling services through the Crisis Resolution Center, the CRC, which it's done in our community since 2001. These services, which are, are at no cost to the families that utilize them, provide critical support during crisis in order to strengthen family dynamics and avoid the need for juveniles to enter into the delinquency and dependency systems here in Placer County. Services include individual and family counseling, educational support, therapeutic activities, conflict interventions, and respite for parents, and referrals to other community supports. In addition, the CRC runs a 24-hour call center, which has proven to lessen the impact on law enforcement dispatch, child welfare services, and juvenile probation. And in fact, they received over 3,000 calls last fiscal year. Outcomes from the CRC are tracked and indicate that of the 89 youth that received direct services last year, only eight later impacted the juvenile justice system. And it's clear that, that this program, along with the multi-agency collaboration of probation and HHS, that there's been a diversion of families and children away from potentially costly county interventions by helping them be successful and self-sufficient. So this contract approval, which will allow the program to operate from July 1st of 13 through June 30th of 14, at a cost not to exceed $560,000, will not require any general fund monies as the probation department receives funding from the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act. And this plan for county use of these state revenues is reviewed annually and improved by the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, which approved this plan coming forth to the board. Therefore, we are respectfully requesting the board authorize renewal of this contract, allowing these important services to continue in our community. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this item? Seeing none, first of all, I just want to say I've seen some of the results of the Coine and Nia Family Home Services. They do a tremendous job, and I'm glad that we're still doing business with them. So is any, is there someone that wants to make a motion or something? Okay, thanks. Moved and seconded, item nine, Probation, JJCPA CRC Program Contract Renewal. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, well, the item is moved. Thank you. And now Judy, are you ready for all this? You got your tennis shoes on or anything?
Good.
Lulu?
She's on her heels.
Okay, backwards.
You are correct.
This is item 10, Sheriff's Department. Item A, Contract Employee Agreement for Forensic Pathology.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. The item before you requests approval of a one-year contract with Dr. Hendrickson to provide forensic pathology services to the county. The cost of the contract is partially offset by the provision of similar services to Sierra and Nevada County, and the
and Nevada County, and the funds for this are included in our proposed budget for 1314. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from board members? Anybody in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10A, Contract Employee Agreement Forensic Pathology. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Item 10B, Law Enforcement Services Amendment to the Contract Between Placer County Sheriff's Office and the Town of Loomis.
Thank you. This is the annual agreement for the provision of law enforcement services to the Town of Loomis. The contract represents a collaborative effort between our office and the Town of Loomis to provide services that meet their needs and recover our costs completely. The increases to the contract are primarily driven by the negotiated proposition, Measure F. It drives the DSA salaries. So in talking to the Town of Loomis, they express their extreme satisfaction with the services of the Sheriff's Office, and while there are gated communities within the Town of Loomis, it doesn't hinder our ability to provide services. So we request your consideration.
You're pushing it. Okay, any board members, oh, Supervisor Montgomery, you have a question?
I did have one question, Judy. So I noticed in the contract with the Town of Loomis, there's an increase of 2.9%, which is fine, but I compare that to the increase with the City of Colfax, which is 6.7%. And I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask about that difference or the Colfax contract.
Certainly, I should have pointed out that within the Town of Loomis's contract was a reduction in the traffic enforcement officer services to offset the increase in the salaries that we could not control. So they opted for a slight reduction in services to help keep their costs in line. Colfax did not. So Colfax will see a larger increase percentage-wise than the Town of Loomis did.
Thank you, because those two figures just jumped out at me. Appreciate it.
Alrighty. Any other board member comments on item 10C, or 10B? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 10B, Law Enforcement Services Amendment to Contract with Placer County Sheriff's and the Town of Loomis. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, we'll move to item 10C, Law Enforcement Services Amendment to the Contract Between the Placer County Sheriff's Office and the City of Colfax. Ms. Laporte?
Thank you. Yes, as Supervisor Montgomery pointed out, the increase to their contract is about 6.7% driven primarily, again, by the costs associated with salary increases for the DSA. And there is one typo in this staff report, and the item called "building cost" is not charged. The Town of Colfax, or the City of Colfax, provides that building for us, so my apologies for that. This amendment also runs from July 1 to June 30 of 2014, and we request your approval.
Supervisor Montgomery?
So just a clarification, I realize that building costs aren't included in this because in the detailed summary, the actual budget summary, they're not included. I understand that in early July, the Sheriff's Department will be moving to the old courts building in Colfax. I believe currently, City Hall, which is where we're located, is either no charge or a minimal charge. Will we have that same model for the courts building?
Yes.
And who will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep on the courts building?
The city will.
The city. Terrific, thank you.
Any other questions for board members? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
It's moved and seconded to approve item 10C, Law Enforcement Services Amendment to the Contract Between Placer County Sheriff's Office and City of Colfax. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? We'll move now to item 10D, Agreement Between the Placer County Sheriff's Office and the Placer County Superior Court.
Thank you. This item requests your approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Superior Courts in Placer County to provide security services for court operations. This contract amount is just over $4.1 million for the 1314 fiscal year, and funding for this is received from the state. We anticipate receiving full funding from the state in the amount specified. However, should that change, we would go ahead and amend the agreement between the Sheriff's Office and the courts. We have a very good working relationship with the courts, and to date, they've been happy with the services provided. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, any questions from audience members regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded to approve item 10D, The Agreement Between the Placer County Sheriff's Office and Placer County Superior Court. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, we'll move to item 10E, Contract Between Placer County Sheriff's Office and IC Solutions.
That was the item tabled earlier on?
Oh, that was tabled.
That was bold.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laporte. We'll now move to item 11, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Empower Placer Update and Program County Treasurer Janine Windishouse is presenting. Morning, or...
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CEO, County Counsel. You have before you today two items for actions. The first one is to receive a report regarding the Empower Placer program, then consider a resolution authorizing resuming the residential program, and then consider setting a public hearing on July 9 related to processing fees for the Empower program, and then also consider a resolution authorizing a TRAN to continue financing program operation. So you'll see that there is kind of a succession there where one item is contingent upon first items that you'll consider. So with that, I will start with the program update. First of all, a quick, a quick history, as I'm sure you're all aware of most of this, I'm not going to go point by point here, but mainly to emphasize that the first board action related to this was December 8, and I just saw a typo, 2009 is when that first official action was, although the board had heard this twice before. And then in March of 2010, several months later, the program was launched, and then in July of 2010, the residential program was suspended by a resolution of your board based on actions of the Federal Housing Finance Agency, or FHFA. After that occurred, the county intervened in a lawsuit that Sonoma had initiated against FHFA regarding counties' rights related to assessment districts and the ability to levy local taxes related to these types of programs. The lower court ruled in favor of the Sonoma County and Placer County and the other co-litigants, which also included Palm Desert and the State of California, the National Resources Defense Council, and the Sierra Club. And they ruled on one item after dismissing other substantive items. And that item was whether the FHFA needed to go through Administrative Procedures Act requirements related to rulemaking in issuing their statements to lenders regarding the residential PACE programs. That was then appealed to the Ninth District Court, and the Ninth District Court ultimately ruled in March of this year in favor of FHFA, indicating that as conservators of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, that they had the broad powers in order to advise lenders related to PACE programs. One of the things I would like to note is that the trial court required FHFA to commence the rulemaking process, and they went through two public comment periods, which created a substantial record, literally volumes, and that was heavily weighted in support of maintaining PACE programs. However, they were not required, due to the final ruling at the appellate court level, to actually promulgate a rule in that process. So that process remains incomplete to this day, and as yet, they have not issued a rule. They are free to do that if they so desire to complete that process. Federal legislation, your board's priorities include in the legislative platform, a legislative fix for PACE at the national level. Your board approved my participation in Sacmetro Chamber's Legislative Federal Advocacy Program, and they have been very, very supportive of a PACE fix. The reason for that is that there are multiple jurisdictions, not just Placer County, but a number of jurisdictions throughout the Sacramento region, that either have PACE programs or would like to initiate PACE programs. So we have worked with Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber on providing a legislative fix at the federal level, and that also includes actually drafting legislation with the assistance of County Counsel and our outside bond counsel. That legislation is supported by Sonoma County and Riverside County, the two other largest programs in the state, and we have two House members at this date who are, have agreed to be cosponsors of that legislation, and we are looking for a couple of other cosponsors before that actually gets introduced. But there's a very positive feeling about that legislation and moving forward in a bipartisan manner to try to have a final solution related to PACE. And the legislation is also supported by numerous stakeholders. Notable in the support and the contingent on the Washington advocacy trip were lenders, mortgage bankers, and utility companies. So there was a broad contingent, and also representatives of the contractors and construction I included this as a measure of the ongoing interest and support for PACE. There is a budget trailer bill currently pending at the state. Since writing this, I now have a bill number, it's AB 77, and as an update this morning, it appears that the amount that would be allocated under this trailer bill to provide a loan loss reserve program or other loan guarantee programs for PACE programs in the state has changed from the $10.8 million to $50 million. So that probably, until that legislation actually gets adopted, it is probably a moving target. That is not money that would go to offset program expenses, it is money that would remain at the state administered through a division of the State Treasurer's office, and it would be available in case a property owner defaulted on an assessment to protect lenders, bondholders, or other stakeholders. The legislation charges CAATFA, California Alternative Energy Transportation Finance Authority, under the State Treasurer to come up with the rules and procedures for operating this program. So there's still a lot of unknown, but again, I include it to show the measure of commitment and ongoing support for PACE programs. And we continue to collaborate closely with Sonoma County and Western Riverside Council of Governments, and so all of us have contacted the State Treasurer's Office and the Executive Director of the program to talk about this legislation and how, if it's passed, how the program might move forward. PACE is something that is a national, not a national program, but programs are embraced nationally. Something that's fascinated me is that even over the last three years with the FHFA's intervention, states have continued to pass PACE legislation. There are now, at last count, and I wouldn't be surprised if there's one or two more, just since I've submitted this, but there are now 32 states in the District of Columbia that have authorized PACE legislation. With regard to Sonoma County specifically, they have now provided over $51 million in financing to over 1,800 property owners. They chose not to suspend their residential program. After the FHFA statements went out, they have proceeded. So this, these represent assessments that have been put in place over the last couple of years, not just prior to the FHFA statements. Also, their program started in March of 2009, one year before our program started. Western Riverside Council of Governments started a program a year and a half ago in the middle of a lawsuit. They were not a party to the lawsuit. They have already provided over $30 million in financing to over 1,700 residents on residential properties, or property owners of residential properties. They have over 2,700 applications pending that are waiting for the construction to be complete, because the financing is provided after the construction is complete. So they have a substantial amount in the pipeline, so to speak. They also have a commercial program, which they just started about six months ago, and that has five approved applications totaling $600,000. At the time I submitted this, they had not actually advanced any funding yet. Western Riverside Cog is now offering their program throughout the state. I have attended conferences where they actually have given presentation and then announced that they will take on other municipalities to provide administration for a PACE program. Data for Sacramento program, it's relatively new, it launched about six months ago, and that was not available at this time. They have a private sector administrator, and so it's, at this point, they have not released any data about their program in terms of number of assessments or amount financed. All of these programs have operated without any adverse action out of the housing regulators or lending institutions to date. There are commercial programs, also operational in Los Angeles and San Francisco, the City of Sacramento, and the County of Sacramento just recently launched a program. I don't know, I should say approved a program, I don't think that that has launched yet. That's likely imminent. There are also both commercial and residential programs throughout the state, most notably in Georgia and Florida and Texas, and then Connecticut has a statewide program. The FHFA letter indicated that there would be specific adverse consequences to all property owners within a jurisdiction if a jurisdiction was operating a PACE program, and that is really the crux of what prompted the suspension of our program in order to protect property owners who particularly were not participating in the program. Property owners who participate in the program sign a disclosure, and the statement indicated that they would essentially redline the rest of the properties in the jurisdiction and change the underwriting criteria by increasing debt-to-income ratios and debt-to-equity ratios for all properties, assuming that the maximum PACE lien was in effect in all properties. They have not done that anywhere, they have not enforced that, and quite frankly, it probably would be not practical for a variety of reasons for them to enforce that. So it's now believed that the risk that they would actually take that type of action is In terms of action, any potential action that could have been precipitated by the FHFA statements, in Sonoma County, there has been a number of financings, or properties where the financing has, new financing has been put in place, either due to a refinancing or a sales transaction. And what they have found is that a limited amount, not all properties are requiring that the PACE lien be paid off. It would seem to indicate that it's more a buyer preference than a lender requirement, because we're seeing that in the case of refinancings, the percentage of refinancings where the assessment is being required to be paid off is much lower than it is in the case of a sales transaction. case of a sales transaction. In Riverside County, 134 properties have been subject to new financing and only four or about 3% was the PACE assessment required to be paid off. So we have always provided such a disclosure in our program from the time it started that that could be a possibility with regard to a PACE assessment that a property owner entered into. And we would continue to do that. And in fact, if we were to go forward with a program, we would review that with County Council and outside council and make sure that that is still pertinent and timely in the language. Specific to Empower Placer, the commercial program has funded five projects to date: an office building, a motel, a wholesale nursery, a campground, and a manufacturing facility. Interestingly enough, the campground was the largest. It was several hundred thousand dollars. Solar system, in fact, you can see it if you drive out Highway 49 across the street from Center Auburn Faith Hospital. That big solar array was financed through Empower Placer. So that total amount is a little over $700,000. Our residential program, we're actually accepting applications for about 14 weeks because we had a soft suspension leading up to the board's final action. Twelve projects were completed totaling over $400,000. The total applications that were received during that 14-week period were about 156 applications, representing about $5.8 million. So we had a substantial response during that time period. Staff has gone back and contacted, not all, but a number of those property owners to inquire their interest in activating their applications if the program were to resume. And they contacted 73, or attempted to contact 73, and 46 indicated that they would be interested in resuming their application. When I say they attempted to contact, there were some where they were no longer the property owner or for whatever reason were not able to contact them. So the next couple of slides will talk about costs, risks, and benefits. The annual budget is, has been approximately a half a million dollars. And our estimates are that it would take about $1.5 million in assessments to cover the cost of an annual budget. And I'll go over that in a little bit more detail in just a moment. Their unrecovered cost to date of $777,000. And so it's estimated that, again, about $3 million. I know those are really round figures, but that, that's on the conservative side, that it would take $3 million. The risks are that, again, the property owners could be required to pay off the PACE assessment. FHFA could change course and begin to enforce their statements. And the other risk from a program standpoint is that the, the number of assessments that we actually fund could still be insufficient to cover the annual cost and to cover the unrecovered cost to date. This program was intended to be self-sustaining and to recover all costs. However, the ability to do that has been significantly impaired by having to suspend the residential program. In terms of benefits, it provides greater progress towards the original program goals related to job creation and providing an economic catalyst locally. The program infrastructure and staffing is in place and ready to go. We believe that there would be minimal cost increases related to restarting the program because that staff and infrastructure is in place. As I stated before, there appears to be a pipeline of at least 46 applications. We would go through and make contact with the rest of the prior applicants whose applications were suspended. And so that would, that volume would help offset program costs. The commercial program has higher overhead than the residential program. Those applications take much longer to process. We thought they took a lot, a long time when they were taking four to six months to process until we attended a recent conference and found out in other counties, those are taking upwards of a year. So we feel pretty good about that. There's a, every property has different interests and decision makers from the property owner, building manager, tenants, who's going to pay the property tax bill that has the new assessment on it? Who is going to receive the benefit of the utility savings? So it just, it starts there. And then there are extensive discussions with any existing lenders on that property as well that take time. Maintaining a commercial program could be helpful to property owners who are required to comply with AB 1103. We haven't heard a whole lot about 11, AB 1103. It took effect in January, but I think we'll be hearing more and more. And that requires non-residential property owners to benchmark their property related to energy consumption and to disclose that benchmarking to prospective buyers in a sale transaction so that a prospective buyer can do a side-by-side comparison on the energy consumption or, or energy efficiency or lack thereof on comparable, otherwise comparable I already mentioned that this state funding of a loan loss reserve could help, let's see, could help this program scale in terms of alleviating concerns from lenders. And also, it could provide carbon credit offsets on, on the, any time that an assessment contract is signed, included in that assessment contract is a conveyance of any environmental benefits or carbon credits associated with the improvements are assigned to the county and where we track them and are warehousing them. There also could be potential new revenue through providing the program to other jurisdictions similar to what Western Riverside Council of Governments is doing. So in July of 2010, when the residential program was suspended, we took a number of measures immediately and made staff reductions and other program reductions related to curtailing costs. So here you have the budgets approved for fiscal year 9, 10 through 12, 13, and then the actual expenditures. And so now to get into the detail of what the expenditures and revenues have been to date, I think the expenditure portion is pretty straightforward in terms of what we have spent in administrative costs and startup costs and what that total expenditures for the program have been to date. And then what the cost recovery has, have, has been from assessments. And as you may recall, how we specifically get that cost recovery is that there's an interest rate charged on the assessment. And a portion of that goes to the bondholder and a portion of it goes to the program to recover costs. So that is something that is collected over the life of that assessment, which can be up to 20 years. There is also a prepayment penalty, and we have had a couple of prepayments where the, the property owner has either decided to pay off or they have been required to do so because of a sale transaction or, that's really been the only case is a sale transaction. And in both cases, that was due to a property owner who, excuse me, the buyer who wanted the PACE assessment paid off. We also received a grant from the California Energy Commission. That was ARA funding that came from the U.S. Department of Energy. And then fee recovery, there are certain fees, such as recording fees, and we charge that, it's really just a pass-through to the clerk recorder's office and other such fees. And then investment income of $11,000. When, when we finance with a TRAN, we are banking that money until it's needed. So any unused balances are accruing interest. So over the last couple of years, it's accrued $11,000. So the total revenues to date are just under $600,000. Then, as I mentioned, we will continue to recover costs on outstanding assessments until they're paid off. And that amount is estimated to be $472,000. And so unrecovered cost to date then net at $777,000. And as a note, the budget, the proposed budget for the coming year for the program is $418,000. What this shows is that if we were to put in place one and a half million dollars of assessments per year, and I went out 10 years, what the revenue will be from that portion of interest that we take to recover costs. So where it says year one going down, each line represents a property collection date. So April, and, excuse me, December, and then April, December, April. Then the following year, if 1.5 million were put into place, again, it's essentially the same number because we're taking the same portion of interest. And the portion of interest that we take changes. It changes periodically. So we take more in the early years and less in the out years. So I ran that out for five years and then totaled it and then showed the fiscal year total for revenue. Now, one of your items is to set a public hearing for next month, if you so choose, related to an application fee. That is not included in these numbers. So then, on the next page, what we did was we took the unrecovered costs and we also, let me, let me go back to slides just to show. So that $472,000 future recovery is included in this amount as not yet recovered, if that makes sense. Again, it makes the calculation more conservative to do it that way. So we took, took that out. And then took the total revenues from the far-right column on this page. That's what the first column is here. Then the annual budget, and we escalated it 5% a year, which we have not had that kind of escalation. Again, we're doing these numbers conservatively. That really is not, I don't think, the expectation. The expectation really is more that the budget would be driven by program volume, which we would adjust the budget up or down based on that program volume. So taking the unrecovered costs as a beginning balance, adding the budget for each subsequent year, and adding in the revenue for each subsequent year, we would achieve break even from all unrecovered costs to date in the '16, '17 budget year. Related to setting the public hearing, that would be to consider an application processing fee. We have conducted a fee study, and we're required to have a public hearing in order to implement a fee. And we'll go into more detail on that fee study and what that revenue would mean to the program on July 9th, if your board chooses to set that hearing. But we would estimate an additional $130,000 a year in fee revenue, and that is not included In order to go forward, we would need to issue a tax and revenue anticipation note in order to finance the, the program costs until we did start receiving revenue sufficient to cover the program costs. We have been doing that since program inception. The last TRAN actually expired in, or matured in November, and that created a negative fund balance for the program of about $1.5 million. And so that most recent TRAN was $1.3 million. We need to cover the unrecovered costs plus the amount budgeted. Because there are unrecovered costs of $777,000, if the board were to choose not to authorize a TRAN, then an appropriation would be, need to be made from some other source to then eliminate the negative balance in this, in this fund. So with that, I bring you back to the actions and conclude my, my program update and would be glad to take your comments and questions.
Supervisor Duran?
Yes. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. And just, that's a lot of information. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the level of detail. Just to summarize, we had a residential program that was suspended due to some action taken by the federal government. There was litigation. The litigation is resolved. We're now in an era where, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, you believe that the residential program could move forward with some perhaps administrative fixes? There is interest in the residential program, is that correct? And that, and, and let me ask you this, is that interest before you've done any advertising? You haven't done any advertising, if the program is going to go forward?
Correct. We haven't done any advertising in the program. We didn't want to create any kind of expectation or, or proceed under any kind of assumption. So if I might also make the point that should the board wish to move forward, we would look at providing the board regular updates, either every two weeks to every month, and certainly in, timely if there were an event such as an action by the federal government, at least in the form of correspondence, not necessarily, you know, formal board items, but when appropriate, board items, but a regular correspondence to the board on the progress of the, of the program and the status of the program.
And is it your opinion that if, if this program is approved, that the interest in the residential, there'll be more interest than you, than you have right now?
More than what we have in the pipeline? Yes. I believe so. I believe so. Let me also make the comment that I think that there is a potential at some point to reach absorption, if you will. And at that point, then, the volume would, would not be, I'm not sure how to characterize it. There would still be volume and there would still be interest. I think that's a couple of years out likely. But I think that's something that we can monitor and, and also measure our costs against.
Okay. And does legal counsel concur that with the status of the litigation and the, and the possible legislative fixes, that the risk is palatable right now?
That is my understanding, but I'm going to let him speak for himself.
Yes. I think the actions initially taken by FHFA were more of a reaction to the housing market decline than a reasoned legal action taken. And I think as time has gone by, the interest in the program has proceeded. Other programs have continued or resumed. FHFA has moderated its approach significantly.
Okay. And the only way that we get this $700,000 back that we've already, that we're in the hole for is by moving forward with the residential program? Is that, will that help?
Yes. The residential really drives the economics and the feasibility of the program. It really does. Because the volume is so much greater, it also takes a lot less time to process an application, so we can move that volume through more quickly.
And your, your calculations being on the conservative end, if we do have more interest, those numbers and getting to that payback period of time would be quicker?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. As far as the, you mentioned in your PowerPoint, the possibility of doing the administration for other jurisdictions without disclosing those jurisdictions, is there interest? Is there interest in doing that?
Yes, I have been approached from time to time by other jurisdictions. I think it would be awkward not having something formal from a jurisdiction to name names, but there is one jurisdiction that is very, very strongly interested, and they have a substantial, you know, population base. And then, I will tell you, because it is a matter of public record, and I don't know exactly what their interest is, other than just information at this point, but actually on the afternoon of July 9th, I've been asked to speak at a workshop with, for the Yuba County Board of Supervisors, as they're interested in moving forward, or considering moving forward on a program.
And is it your understanding that this could be another source of, to generate revenue?
Yes. Yes, it could be. Because the higher the volume, the quicker the payback on the unrecovered costs to date. And, as you can see, because of the cumulative nature of, of the ongoing revenues, that once the program scales, those, the revenues start to increase. So, it's, it's really all about volume, quite frankly.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Supervisor McFerrin, are you?
Thank you. Thank you, Janine. You have very detailed, appreciated, good recap of where we are and potentially where we could go. One of the things you mentioned was that there's a move afoot to carry some legislation forward. Who are the House members who have proven amenable to this so far?
Previously, from, from this area was Thompson, who, the districts have changed a little bit, so he did come down into the Sacramento area, but he is now more in the Napa-Sonoma area. So, Thompson, Congresswoman Matsui, they were prior co-sponsors, and we have had a number of contacts with them, and they're looking forward to sponsoring again. Previously, Congressman Lundgren was a co-sponsor, and Ami Bera is interested in signing on as well. So, there, there are quite a number who are interested, and part of it has to do with getting the language in front of their legislative staff. There have been discussions with legislators, other legislators, not just in California, but also in Florida and in New York. That's where their, the majority of programs are in, that are up and running are in New York, Florida, and California, so.
Have we had conversations either directly with our legislators or their staff, either Congressman Lamalfa or Congressman McClintock on this?
Yes, when we went to Washington DC, we met with staff from Congressman Lamalfa's office, and he is aware that we want to follow up. At the time, we did not have bill language, and so we were giving an overview of the issue, of what the proposed solution would be, and let, and let them know that we would be returning to them with bill language. Now that we have bill language that's amenable to Matsui and to Thompson, then the more formal process of, of having other co-sponsors sign on is, that's what we're embarking on now. And again, we're working with Western Riverside COG and Sonoma in that effort. Everyone recognizes that this is a bipartisan initiative, and it needs to come out of the, the legislation needs to come out of the gate that way as well. And previously, we did have a number of both Republican and Democrat House members who had signed on.
Okay. And that leads me, actually mentioning Sonoma and Western Riverside, leads me to my next two questions, which are, what is our interest rate, basically, on the, on the loan that we would be making to homeowners as compared with Sonoma and Riverside?
We are at 6%. Sonoma is at 7 and 1/4%, and Riverside?
A slide scale?
Oh, yes. Riverside, depending upon the maturity, it changes. Do you know what that is, what the range is?
I don't, but it's higher than ours.
It's, yes, especially in the, out in the 20 years, it's, it's higher than Sonoma's as well, I believe, and I can get that for you.
Okay.
That's another thing with the volume and the payback, is that there is room for us to, to bring the interest rate down if we were so inclined, if we felt that that, that's what the market dictated. And let me say also that I think it's really important that the program remain nimble and responsive to the market for pace assessment financing, to the real estate market, and the overall economy, and to the regulatory environment. We recognize that, and it means that from time to time, we may need to come back to the board to make modifications to the program.
That's really good to hear, because one of the concerns that's just been raised about it is, gosh, you know, who in this day and age of, you know, really low interest rates would take a 6% loan? And so, I think that is a question that our board might want to reconsider at some point in, in the future, not on today's agenda, but good to hear that. Roughly, what is the default rate on these at Sonoma or at Riverside, since they've really moved ahead more robustly than we have?
Riverside, since they've only been up and running for about a year and a half, we don't have real good data on that. Sonoma has done a lot of monitoring of that, and it is, and they've actually had outside firms come in and do the analysis for them, but it is lower than the overall delinquency, property tax delinquency rate. It's a fraction of that amount. I'm sorry, don't have a number offhand. I can tell you in Placer County, we are now getting back down to our historic delinquency rates, which are just over 1%. So, we're talking, you know, a, a fraction of a percent. We have had a couple of late pays. We have been right on top of them, and we have collected them. So, in, in our program specifically. So, we do monitor it very, very closely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Wagon.
Yeah, thanks, Janine. Great research and excellent presentation. A quick, simple question. With Western Riverside and Sonoma, do you happen to know the volume of their recent applications? Do you know if there's an uptick in them and/or not, or?
I can tell you that Riverside, Western Riverside, which has been up and running for a year and a half, is going quite robustly. It's continuing on at its initial pace. In terms of like monthly or weekly, I don't have that number. I have the broader number, which is, you know, about 4,000 applications over the last year and a half. With regard to Sonoma, just recently heard that their application level has waned, and we're trying to find out what's going on there. I don't know if that's a market absorption issue. I don't know if it's an interest rate sensitivity. I don't know if it is a real estate market improvement. I, I'm, we're not sure. But, that's definitely, that's one of the reasons for reporting to the board. We have always kept very good records and statistics on this program, almost day to day, but certainly week to week. And that's one of the reasons that I say the program needs to be nimble in terms of interest rate, in terms of terms, and it needs to be responsive to the marketplace. So, certainly, let me, let me just put it quite bluntly. If the board were to authorize lifting the suspension, and we would, we would start with the, those applications that have suspended, and get those that are interested in reactivated, and then we would market the program. If it appeared that we're not getting the response that we had expected, or particularly that we don't think that is sufficient to maintain feasibility, we're going to be discussing that right away with CEO staff, and then appropriately so with the board.
Supervisor Umer.
Yes, sir. Janine, thank you. Appreciate the fact that you have kept on top of this. However, I have a couple of, perhaps, I don't know, cautionary notes for us before we proceed. The entire viability of the Empower Program is a function of being able to put the money to use as quickly as possible with as little associated work as possible, right? In terms of our costs with the program versus the revenues. To that end, some things that, that I think before we as a board reengage, we might want to go out and verify in the marketplace prior to spending any more staff time on this, or, or dollars moving it forward. Since 2010, the installed price per watt has dropped about 50%. We are, we were in 2010 at about $6 an installed watt. We're now down to about $4 an installed watt on residential projects. So, obviously, what that means is it's going to take more loans to absorb all that dollar, all those dollars, thereby delaying the time that it takes to put the money to work. You, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I'm just, you're speaking specifically to solar.
Yes.
Is that right? Yes, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just on solar.
That's what, okay.
Which is where the, the big dollar loans are. I mean, without the.
That and HVAC.
Okay, but the solar is still three to four times the cost of HVAC improvements.
Yes.
HVACs are about $6,000.
Yes. You're correct.
$15,000 to $20,000.
You're correct.
So, in, in terms of this notion, this fundamental notion of the viability of the program being dependent on our ability to get the money out the door. So, we have, number one, the cost driver going down thereby reducing the, the loan amounts that we're dealing with, which then would necessitate more loans being made in order to reach that threshold of the total number of dollars getting out the door, which of course then increases the total number of loans being processed. The example that we're seeing here in Placer County with the, the folks that you reached out to, you said 46 of them indicated that they might be interested in reopening, and that the estimated total was 1.64 million, which yields an average of about $35,000 per application. Yet, the West Riverside at $30 million, out at 1,700 applications, is $17,600 per loan, so roughly half of what we're looking at. Thereby, again, kind of bringing to light this notion that it may actually be more loans that are going to be required, and more processing, and more time that's going to be required. Something else that has changed since 2010, and this might have something to do with what you just said in terms of Sonoma's applications levels having dropped off. Riverside is covered by Southern California Edison. Southern California Edison still has rebate dollars available for residential retrofit. Sonoma's PG&E, they're out of money for residential retrofit. That's gone.
Right.
So, that might have something to do with one. Now, the good news is that the economics of solar have improved such in, in the last three years, as to help offset that decline in, in the rebates. But, clearly, each of these deals that were first put forward in 2010, each of those would have to be rebid. I mean, those, those prices.
Oh, absolutely. This is, that's based on the application at the time.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
The other thing that we should all be aware of is that in 2009, 2010, when we started moving this program forward, there really weren't finance tools available in the marketplace anywhere along these lines. You had essentially, you could go out and borrow money at market rate to write a check to finance a solar installation absent a program like this. In the last three years, there have been a number of finance tools that have been introduced in the marketplace that residential solar installers are using, that offer everything from essentially residential power purchase agreements, lease products, zero-down products. There are a number of different products against which we would now be competing if we were to move forward. And, so, again, that, it just kind of cautionary in terms, because our entire success or failure of this program is going to be that function of how quickly can we put the money into the marketplace? And I'm just a little concerned that we might be, we might be anticipating an absorption of our dollars a little faster than what today's market might actually bear out. And I will say that especially if we go and add a $500 application fee, it will really slow down, because there's, there's, there's not another finance tool that has any kind of an application fee like that that's currently in the.
Actually, what Western Riverside does, and they then include it in the loan, which is what we would do as well.
Okay.
So, that wouldn't, it doesn't have to be out of pocket. So, that's the reason that we call, part of the reason is really a processing fee, not an application fee.
Yeah, because it's not an application.
Because if you're turned down, you, you would not owe it. We adhere to the Truth in Lending Act requirements. So, if someone were to rescind during the three-day right of rescission, we have to return that money anyway.
Right.
So, from a practical standpoint, it's easier just when we fund, we have an approved application, we're funding it, we include it in that balance.
So, then, then where the staff report says a conservative estimate of 260 residential applications per year would result in $130,000 annually, that would actually be 260 loans funded per year, not application?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Then, again, getting back to this notion of our ability to get the money out the door, right now, from, from actual statement of interest by somebody I'm willing to fill out an application to actual close of a system installation, it's about 30%. So, in order to hit 260 installations, you are.
It's two and a half times that in terms of the number of applications that you processed in order to hit 260 applications.
Right now, when a solar company goes out and does their, their sales and marketing, their drop-off from initial application to somebody who actually signs a contract and then fulfills and gets a system installed, is only about 30% fulfillment all the way through.
Okay.
So, in order to yield that 260, again, getting back to this notion of how quickly can we get the money into the marketplace so we can start earning money on our money?
That 260 is about five, five per week, and we were receiving in the high teens to, you know, let's say, let's just round it to 20, 20 to 25 applications a week.
Sure.
So, again, I backed that way down in order to make it conservative.
Right. And, and I appreciate that. And again, this is, this is simply from the standpoint of, of understanding that the market from where we were in 2010 has definitely changed.
I understand that, and I think.
From the loan value, and from what we are now competing against.
That's one of the, that's one of the reasons I made the point, that we have to be nimble. There are different products, and if you recall, the board indicated that, that essentially they did not want us to compete with the private sector. We, all of the applicants have to go through an informational seminar, if you will. Takes about two hours. We do it not individually, but in groups when we, when we have a volume. And one of the things that we talk about in there, in addition to consumer protection and hiring a contractor, is there are other types of financing. The board asked us to do that, and we continue to do that. When we work with the lenders where lender consent is required, we've made it very clear, we're not interested in competing with you. We want to be complimentary to you.
Right. It's another tool.
We want to be another tool, just like SBA is the best example I can think of.
That's, and that's.
So, so, yes, I, that's, yes, it is tempered by all of that, and.
My, I guess my, my, my thought would be before we really engage this, embrace it, and move forward, I know that, because I, I recall getting the feedback from an awful lot of Placer County solar installers in 2009, as we were first contemplating the program, 2010, as we're moving it forward. Back then, it was very, very well embraced. I, I'd be, I think it would be beneficial for us to, to maybe call together a quick little roundtable, some, some solar folks that are currently selling, using financing, they're easy, they're easy to find, they, they advertise, and just see, how does our program today compare with what's, what you guys are using today, and would our program still be beneficial today?
Okay. We've, we have a little of that anecdotally. We've, we have a little of that anecdotally, but not in a, in terms of a real, you know, utilizing a more scientific methodology in terms of we contacted this many and et cetera.
Right.
So, we do know that, that contractors would like to see, at least some that we remain in contact with, would like to see the program.
What is, just out of curiosity, what are we assuming is the average loan amount that drives the absorption of our dollars in this scenario?
Again, it's that, it's, the dollar amount is 1.5 million.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and I, I arrived at the 1.5 million by, again, coming up with a conservative amount based on the 260 annual applications.
Okay, thank you.
I don't remember what that number is offhand, I'm sorry. But that is how I arrived at it. It's, it's, it's a lot lower than the, than the 35,000. I think it's like 17,000? I see you, I see you punching your calculator.
Well, if we're putting out 1.5 million at-
Divide by 260.
Then that's only $5,000 per loan.
Yeah, again, again, I tried to make it very, very conservative. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because your, your average systems are three to five KW at an installed watt price of four to $5 per watt, so you're 15 to 20,000 cash per-
You know, a substantial amount of what we previously saw were our very large homes in the affluent communities who have very high energy rates-
Oh, yeah.
Just the size of their, of their home, and, and therefore the cost. And our average solar system price tag was greater than what we're seeing in Sonoma and Riverside when you, when those are included in the average. And that was a, I don't have a percentage, but it was a substantial portion. We're looking to diminish their, their utility rate substantially with those systems.
Yeah, taking out-
So that's part of what drive, has driven it.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
You know, a lot, for a lot of programs, what we see on a home in some of our communities are what they're seeing in commercial properties.
Supervisor Duran?
Yes, very, very good questions and information. Good. Janine, if we were to move forward with the hearing, would you be, would your staff be able to move forward with getting this background information prior to the hearing on June 9?
If that, if that's, you know, there's different kinds of market studies that can be done. You could hire a firm and have them go out, you know, and make a lot of phone calls, et cetera. But if, what Supervisor Yular is talking about, we actually have contact information for quite a vast number of contractors to go out and survey them, do an initial survey, and then to be able to do follow-up where we don't have response. I, I think we probably could do that, yep.
Okay. And as far as the percentage of applications from the city of Roseville, I, I know that they don't offer any incentives for, for solar. Do you, do you know the percentage off, offhand?
I don't have that on a community basis.
Okay. And they also don't allow power purchase agreements as well, so I know this because I've, I've looked into it personally. But if you could get that information as well, because that is the largest jurisdiction-
Sure, yeah.
-here, and they would certainly pull, or I would anticipate considerable number of applications from the city. Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I had just a couple more questions came to me during the discussion because it was so good. And the first one, simple one, is the $500 processing fee. Can people pay that out of pocket if they choose not to finance it?
Yes.
Excellent, because it always makes me cranky when I have to finance those things over time. And the second is, you, you had a chart that showed kind of revenues and expenses out over 10 years, and-
Do you want me to go back?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. That's the one. Supervisor Yular brought up a really good point, which is the question of saturation, and can we get this out quickly and get it to a saturation point? My question is, is if we get it out quickly and we become quickly saturated, and so within a couple of years, the number of application drops off, what does that do to this chart, if anything? Or do we have an expectation of a certain number per year over the next 10 years?
If you, if you stopped it at a point where you had achieved breakeven-
Mm-hmm.
-then basically those numbers just stay static, because I, if you recall, the, the revenue total, or it says interest, is based on five years. So those five years would just continue to provide revenue. And you, and you would quit incurring costs if you shut down the program at that point.
Okay, but the revenue would continue for that five-
For the one, all the ones that are in place, yeah. So it would run out just, just like that.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, any more questions from board members? Does anyone in the audience want to address this issue, seeing none? Bring it back to the board.
I would move approval of this pending the concerns that have been raised with regards to reach out to the solar contractors, as well as looking at the, the data that we talked about, and prepare for a hearing on June 9th, or July 9th.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded on item 11A to consider a resolution to authorize resuming the residential program and to set a public hearing for July 9th, 2013 for consideration of a resolution authorizing processing fees for M-Power applications. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions?
I could just make one final comment. You know, for the public's benefit, but, you know, having this be a refresher for us, one of the key elements of enthusiasm when we first considered the program was the economic development impact, and obviously appreciate all of your work that went into running these numbers and the thought behind all of that, and the concern and the really good discussion about how we don't want to have on our books any net losses, but all of that ignores the very significant potential positive impact that it could have on our local economy with local vendors and some of the folks that are in energy business, you know, in, in not just solar, but, but all of the opportunities it will have. So I just didn't want to lose that perspective as we go forward.
Under the, under the legislation that the program is, was developed under AB 811 as assessment district structure, a year and a half ago SB 555 went into effect, and it allows, it would, it would require some actions of the board to adopt a new structure, possibly in addition to this, but it means that new construction can also receive this type of financing. So, again, that's something to just watch and be mindful of. So in other words, AB 811, the, the structure had to be existing. It couldn't be new construction. Under SB 555, you can offer this financing for, for example, solar, because you're out, on new construction, you're obviously not upgrading an HVAC system. But, for example, solar can be financed through this on new construction. So just kind of tying in what you're, what you're saying.
I'm sorry, just to clarify though, but that's only for the qualifying equipment. So if I'm building a new house, and it's $500,000 for the house, I'm not borrowing the $500,000.
Correct.
It's only the $20,000 I'm going to spend on the solar.
Correct.
They have a separate note essentially with that.
Correct.
So they no longer have the seasoning requirement of being able to prove your energy consumption decides the system in order to qualify for the program. That's what's-
Yeah, they actually didn't, we didn't have those, those types of qualifications in terms of the energy consumption. It was more based on what was being replaced, is, you know, you're replacing something that's outdated and inefficient with something that's new.
Again, getting back to HVAC versus the solar.
Right, right, right. So that's part of that, being nimble and, and, you know, looking at, you know, just ongoing monitoring of feasibility of the program, so.
Okay, we'll move to item 11B, Trans Tax Revenue Anticipation Notes Resolution. Is that our next item? Janine?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is an important part right here.
So, 11B, again, that's the TRAN.
Right.
And I, I included that in the presentation in terms of the, the financing as well. I wanted you to have all of that information before taking the subsequent action, so.
So we just need to take action on that item?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, what would be the timing on going out and approving the sale in order to raise the money for the program?
It's immediate because it's done through the Treasury. There isn't, there isn't, there isn't any, a third party that we're working with.
Okay.
It's through the Treasury.
Okay.
So if the, so as an example, if the board approved this today, go back to the office this afternoon and complete the paperwork. So that's, that's the timing issue. I will tell you that there is a fiscal year-end issue in that funds cannot be negative over fiscal year-end. So if there is not a TRAN in place over fiscal year-end, then we'll need to do some type of inter-fund borrowing from another fund in order to make, bring the cash balance flush, if you will.
The existing amount we've already spent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You also can change the term on the TRAN. This, it's for 13 months, as presented to you here. It could be for three weeks.
I guess, I guess my question, Janine, is should, should that happen where today we move forward with approving the sale, and we go ahead and perfect that sale, and in three weeks' time, after talking to, and there are only, you know, there are four or five contractors that do the vast majority of the work, if, if after talking to the, the installing community, we find out that for whatever reason, our finance product might not be as competitive as we had hoped, and it might not be utilized, what have we lost? What, what, what is our potential jeopardy if we go up and move forward with this and we end up not then moving forward with actually issuing the loans?
Okay, so with not issuing the loans?
Yeah, we end up really not running a program.
Okay, so-
The feedback that we get is-
No program and, and no TRAN, then-
No, I'm sorry. Yes to the TRAN, yes, in other words, our board says yes to this today.
Okay, so you still have the issue of $777,000 in unrecovered costs, and then you have a TRAN that doesn't have to be paid back for 13 months, but which has no penalty for prepayment. So it basically gives us the fiscal year to work out, how are we going to cover the, those, where's the appropriation going to come from, if you will, to cover those unrecovered costs? And then at that point, again, there's no penalty for, for prepayment, so we can unwind it at any time.
That was my only concern.
Yeah.
My only concern was if, if today the board authorizes this, and after hearing back from the marketplace, we, we learn that for whatever reason, we might not be as competitive as we thought, and it might not make sense for us to move forward, what, do we have any jeopardy? And it doesn't sound like we really do.
I mean, you're at three-quarters of a percent interest. That's what you're at, is three-quarters of a percent interest for the time that it's outstanding.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Now, do you need a motion to approve?
Well, if no one in the audience has any-
Oh, sorry.
I don't see anybody, so yes, please.
Move forward.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 11B, TRAN Tax Revenue Anticipation Notes Resolution. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize for leaving the podium pretty much early there.
Okay, that's all right, thanks. Now we'll move to item 12, County Executive, North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. Ms. Merchant?
Good morning, Mr. Holmes, members of the board. Jennifer Merchant with the county executive office. The contract and scope of work and budget before you for consideration today will allocate $4,394,440 in transient occupancy tax funds to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association for the promotion of tourism and implementation of visitor-serving capital projects and transit operations in eastern Placer County. The recommended contract amount will fund administrative costs, direct marketing, program research, visitor information, transit services, and various capital projects. This year's contract takes five specific steps toward a three-year strategy to streamline and simplify processes and to facilitate alignment with county goals. The first is the contract revises the formerly separate transportation and infrastructure committees into one single committee with specific representation from transportation and special district stakeholders, county staff, and public at-large members. This committee reviews capital projects and transportation program applications and makes recommendations to the resort association board prior to their recommendation to your board for approval. We have agreed to streamline accounting systems by eliminating advance of TOT dollars to the resort association and instituted a quarterly process for county payment of capital project invoices. The contract now requires all TOT-funded transportation contracts to be consistent with state and federal law, including those such as ADA and the federal DOT drug and alcohol programs. We have also agreed to remove the inclusion of services provided by Placer County in the resort association budget, which eliminates the transfer of funds back and forth from the county to the resort association, to the county. We thought that was a really good idea. Took us a while to come up with that one. And we have also added county-initiated capital projects and planning to the resort association's integrated work program to more align with Board of Supervisors-directed capital project priorities. In order to provide the agreed-upon tourism-related services, the fiscal year 2013-14 contract budget allocates funds to the following resource categories. About $2.3 million for marketing, about three-quarters of a million dollars for visitor support and transportation, and just under $1.4 million for capital improvements. Those funds are generally set aside in the county treasurer, Treasury, awaiting allocation and approval of projects by your board. So not necessarily for expenditure in one fiscal year, although it could be. While this contract budget allocates just under $200,000 less to the resort association than the prior fiscal year, we expect to return to your board with a revised contract following adoption of the final budget to allocate remaining TOT fund balance. This will likely result in a larger contract budget, as well as a revised scope of work that calls for additional services and capital project allocation commensurate with that additional budget amount. And that's it for my remarks. I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Okay, any questions from board members? Supervisor Yular, your light is on, and you have a-
Sorry.
Supervisor Montgomery?
I want to just start by saying that I'm delighted we're hearing this in June. In the last couple of years, we haven't heard this till September, and I think one year as late as November.
November last year.
Yeah, so I'm really pleased that we're actually getting this in, in a timely fashion. I know that both the resort association who are here, and I'm sure probably have some comments that they would like to make as well, but the resort association and the CEO's office really sat down after last year's negotiation, figured out a better way forward in this process that really has proven to be a better way forward. And I'm assuming it worked seamlessly because part of that better way forward was my offer to involve myself in the discussions if, if I needed to be involved, and no one called me. So I, I'm guessing that was a, a good sign rather than the fact that they just forgot I existed. So I'm just going to start with that comment, and then if Sandy or, I think that's Ron behind Jennifer there, had additional comments or anything that they wanted to present, we'd love to hear it.
All righty.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors and Mr. President. I just, I'm thrilled as well, Jennifer, that we're able to get this done by June. I think, you know, this is my second year of being here. I just passed that second year mark in May, and in my tenure, we haven't been able- And in my tenure, we haven't been able to get it done in time for us to have a budget before our organization, which starts July 1st. So I want to give kudos to Mr. Bosch and Ms. Merchant for helping us get this done on time this year, and that was great. A couple of things did come along the way and, you know, as with every negotiation, there are always areas where you have a, a little bit of difficulty. This year by removing those county services off the top and then applying the old formula of percentages really would have taken our marketing budget down by a full 30%, which we didn't believe was sustainable. So we came back with a balanced priority budget, which was accepted by the county, and so we appreciate that ability to move away from that formula. We are going to be having a planning retreat for our board as we do every year. This will be next week and as the first time I've heard about a three-year strategy was in seeing this staff report to you all, we're hoping for some clarification on what that is going to mean for us in the future. And certainly we, I think, you know, I can speak for my board in saying that we want to continue to have a very valued role for you all in terms of hearing and having a public process on how capital expenditure should be made out of that vote or approved 2% TOT. And then to be able to analyze, research, bring it back to you for recommendations that include what we think is the highest and possible use for the benefit of tourism in North Lake Tahoe. So we hope that, that in the three-year strategy, that there is not a diminished role for our organization in that process. You know, as we look at the TOT today and where we're at year-to-date, we are going to definitely have a record collection year. And I, I remind you that this is through a recession and two years of minimal snowfall, and we're still going to be accomplishing that. And our pacing for this next year, as we look at the first quarter of this next year, is quite a bit ahead of where we are today and where we were on the first quarter of last year. So if all indications come true, we're going to have a record year this year and then another record-breaking year the following year. We're also seeing some, some great momentum in terms of the redevelopment of the area. I think you're all aware that Calneva has been purchased and they have some great plans moving forward. We have been hearing that Boulder Bay is, is looking at getting its financing in order. Homewood is making its way through the litigation process and we anticipate, at least they think they'll be breaking ground in 2014. We're looking at North Star expansion, Squaw expansion. So all of this is great news moving forward and I think as the economy is improving, it's perfect timing that we're going to be able to see us taking advantage of this momentum. I'm really excited about the Kings Beach Core Improvement Project getting, getting a head start and the visioning piece that will be taking place tomorrow evening. And our Tahoe City Group has been meeting with Mr. Bosch on how can we possibly take advantage of this momentum in getting maybe some of the properties that are on the market right now in Tahoe City, in particular the Hendrickson property, which we'd all like to see go away. You know, that there are some opportunities that we may want to take advantage of right away. So this is a very valuable partnership. I am, I'm really grateful for the opportunity that we have to make these recommendations to you and to hopefully have a sense of purpose in our role as we move forward. And, and I, and I really look forward to this, like I said, clarification of these roles in the next week when we have our planning retreat and, and being able to continue to provide this service for you into the future. So thank you.
Supervisor Euler, if you have a question for?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am.
You and your board members live in the Tahoe area.
Yes, sir.
Possibly one of the most beautiful places on earth.
Yes, sir.
Where would you go for a retreat? Go to Lodi?
No, we stay right there, of course, of course. We're going to be meeting at the community center, which I believe is one of your buildings in Tahoe City. So, yeah, why would we go anywhere else? You're absolutely right.
I was just curious.
I suggested Spindelshanks. There wasn't a gate there.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but just I, I wanted to make note of a couple things within the contract that I think are noteworthy and also then just some suggestions for next year and also just to prove that I do actually read these things. So under progress reports, which is number four within the contract, I suggest that next year paragraphs B and C be taken out of progress reports because they're actually related to the contract, not a progress report. And so I don't think they're actually appropriate under that heading, so we should probably look for a new heading next year. Under infrastructure on page five, the community at large representatives will be appointed by the resort association and approved by the county executive office. I would like to just add that that should be in consultation with District Five Supervisor, if not the entire board. Not in this year's contract because it's already been approved with this language, but I just think that's a really good procedure for that since in theory the District Five Supervisor should be familiar with at least some of those appointees and might have some opinions. Page seven, paragraph seven, we seem to be obligating the resort association to undertake a periodic review to assure, ensure that all lodging properties and vacation rental firms in Placer County are listed on their websites. I think we mean eastern Placer County within the TOT collection area. I don't want to obligate you to collecting information for Roseville or Lincoln. So no offense, really, honestly.
And I think the intention on that is clear.
Yeah, I just want to make sure next year we actually get that codified.
You bet.
And then last, I'm absolutely delighted to see the page, again, going back to page five, infrastructure, the $150,000 for ongoing maintenance of the tourist-related infrastructure. I think it's really important that we not only build beautiful things, but we maintain them to a level and an expectation that our, our visitors are really happy with, so.
And, and we're continuing to discuss that as to whether that means ongoing operation types of maintenance or whether that's the larger capital maintenance. And I think there's arguments for both. As we cleared the trails this year into Squaw Allen, we saw that that was well-received. You know, we have to really look at, do we want to do that type of maintenance or do we want to have the roof replacement kind of maintenance, you know, the major one-time pieces? So we'll be looking at that and coming back with a recommendation on how that should be spent.
And as always, my offer stands. If, you know, the county and the resort association gets any impasse on any of these discussions, I'm happy to put my, or in the water, stand-up paddle boarding or otherwise.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anyone else wish to address the board on this item?
Chairman Holmes, I just wanted to comment on Supervisor Montgomery's additions. We do have an opportunity to come back with the final budget and make those corrections or changes, so if there's anything else between now and then, we can come up with a list of those things and add them if, if it's appropriate. So there is an opportunity before next year.
Supervisor Euler.
Yep. If, if you wouldn't mind, Jennifer, would you, the, the suggested revisions that you just outlined, would you get those to us in written form so I can view them juxtaposed with what currently exists?
Absolutely.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Are you, your light is on, as you do it there? All righty. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming down and sitting through this enlightening board meeting. And Ron, I just want to let you know that Tuesday is Senior Citizens Day at a lot of the area restaurants, so while you're down here, you might take advantage of that. All righty.
And your favorite places.
Well, I, you know, I got you out of here by noon, so that's all I can do for you. All righty, is there any, any action the board wants to take?
Yeah, I believe that we have approved the contract with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association for fiscal year 2013.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 12, County Executive, North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Contract. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you. And now we'll move to item 12B, Regional University Joint Powers Authority Discussion. Jim Durfee presenting.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Durfee with the CEO's office. Sounds different today. I'll try to be brief, in part because it's late and in part because the smart money says I won't get through this without having a coughing fit, so I apologize ahead of time for allergies. I'm here today to talk to your board about getting guidance to staff and direction regarding the potential development of a joint powers authority agreement with the city of Roseville to further the regional university-specific plan project. The concept would be to expedite the project and provide oversight to the mutual benefit of both jurisdictions and the development project as we move forward. As you'll recall, the project encompasses about 1,100 acres in the western Placer area, and the concept was for about a 600-acre university campus for a four-year university to be funded by the development of about 550 acres of residential property with the profits or proceeds from that development going to the base infrastructure and development of a, a campus and getting a, a campus started. The concept would be that the developer would donate that project to a university to be used in that fashion. Due to the recession and the slowdown, the, the project has really sat and we're at, at the moment, there is no commitment from a four-year university. But in recent conversations with both the developer and the city of Roseville, county staff and, and those other partners have talked through this and it believe, we all believe that there may be some mutual benefit for us to put together a joint powers authority to further the development of the project. The concept initially here would be that the, a JPA would provide oversight, perhaps ownership of the project and, and management as it develops. It could potentially accept the donation from the, from the developer and the parties mutually work together to go out, recruit, find an appropriate university partner, and then oversee the development of the project so that there could be assurances to the parties that the project develops as it's anticipated to. The, a JPA would also provide a really good forum if there's consideration of jurisdictional interest in the property, whether or not the property would ultimately annex, would the project be in, in the city of Roseville, would it be in unincorporated Placer County? That JPA would provide a really good forum for those discussions so that those could be vetted out and fully understood by all of the parties and, and the determination made as to how to proceed. A potential structure that's been considered would be perhaps a five-member board with two members each from the two jurisdictions with perhaps a, a seat reserved for a representative of the developer or later of the university. That could happen. Those kinds of details would be worked out through negotiations based on direction from your board from the Roseville City Council and those kinds of things brought back for further consideration should your board decide that it wanted to proceed this way. There would be nothing binding about any decisions your board would make today. All we're asking for is, A, do you want staff to engage in detailed conversations with the city to, to put together a proposal for a JPA? Do you want us to do that? And if so, do you have any particular direction, anything that you'd want us to be considering as we go through those discussions? So that's really all we're asking for today is for that input, direction as to whether you want us to proceed or not. With that, there are representatives from the developer here in the audience. If you have questions for them, I'll be happy to try to field any questions you may have and we appreciate any input and direction that you might provide.
You mentioned the possibility of a five-member board with a, someone from the development community that would be appointed by the Board of Supervisors or would that be appointed by the JPA?
Well, it would be, yet to be determined. That would, that would depend on how those negotiations went and what the desires of the parties as they went forward would be. It could be structured in any number of ways.
Okay. I don't have any problem moving forward on this. You know, we all know we need a, we'd like to have a regional university. If it ends up in Roseville, it's still in Placer County, so I really don't have any problem with that and I think it's something worth pursuing. Supervisor Durant?
Yeah, just to kind of give you a little context in, in where we are. You know, we, we had a discussion a couple of months ago about another option relating to reimbursement of the actual infrastructure costs. And I recognize that the board had a little bit of concern of going at this alone and that there would be some risk here. So based on that, we, myself and David, reached out to the developer and also reached out to the city of Roseville, knowing full well that they were very interested in, in their own pursuit of a regional university. And I know Supervisor Euler was actually on their board assisting them with that, with that piece of it. So this concept of a JPA is just that. It's just a concept to try to move the discussion forward to see if there are, in the greater scheme of things, there is a mutual benefit, I think, to the region as a whole, but are there some alternatives that put a little bit less risk on us and there's a shared risk among, among a large jurisdiction such as the city of Roseville? So that, hopefully that gives the context as to why, why we are, we haven't discussed, haven't discussed on any, you know, the, the rules of JPA or how, how we were going to decide who would sit on what. Those are all to be determined and negotiated out in the future, but that's, that's a little bit more information.
All right. Any other board member comments? Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? All righty. So I think we have direction. You have nodding heads for direction, go ahead and proceed? You don't need an, is this an action item?
No, there was no specific action requested other than that you provide that direction. And we will be returning to your board as we have further conversations, keep you updated, and if we need further direction, we'll be back.
Fair enough. Very good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durfee. And now we'll move to item 12C, legislation. I was going to say litigation.
This is just a very, very abbreviated update on legislation, specifically it relates to state legislation, as well as to ask for your approval of two position letters for a couple of labor-related bills. The staff report is really to identify that staff is tracking well on a number of bills as they're moving out of the house of origin and have moved out of the house of origin. Many of them have turned into two-year bills and we continue to watch them even through next year. Specifically, there are a couple of things in the staff report that we talked about on cap and trade specifically, just would note that.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am. Allison, and before these folks leave, is Mr. Durfee still around? Mr. Chairman, with your, with your permission, if, I, I had my light on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the university item before we finished and.
I'm sorry, I'm drifting.
I don't know if Mr. Durfee's still around. I'd love if he could hop back in here.
I'm so sorry.
I, that's right. I just wanted to make a comment. I, I understand Supervisor Durant's concern about quote-unquote "shared risk." I, I just want you to be clear what my thinking is if we move forward with the JPA with Roseville, and that is that, and I don't, I don't think Jack meant this perhaps as negatively as it might have sounded in talking about the shared risk. This is, I think, a shared opportunity and I hope that we approach it from the standpoint with the city of Roseville, that we have a phenomenal opportunity presented to us as a region. If I'm Roseville, I'm very much going to be looking at this from the standpoint of what's in it for us, not what are we liable for. So I, 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 I hope that as we move forward, have this conversation with Roseville and, and begin to engage this, we, we are doing it from the perspective of how can we maximize the opportunity that has been presented to us mutually as a region? What are our long-term objectives, both the city and the county? What are our long-term objectives from a, a gift like this, from a project like this? How do we, how do we leverage this for the purpose of additional economic development in our county and in our region? And, and then, of course, be cognizant of the fact, again, if I'm Roseville, I, I want to ask the question really, what's in it for me, right, long-term? If this is just a county deal, well, the county has the project essentially now. The county could go forward. So if I'm Roseville, I want to know, all right, why? If I'm coming to the table and, and, you know, there, if there's any liability associated, I don't know where it would be, but if I'm coming to the table, why? What's in it for us? And, and so I think our board. And so I think our board ought to be prepared to have that conversation very candidly at some point with staff or with Roseville if we decide to move forward. But I just, if we're inviting them to this, I'm encouraged, the board wants to do it. I'm encouraged that we see an opportunity to fulfill this dream of a regional university. I think it's really going to take, and I think my message to Roseville would be, it's really going to take that combined brain power and resource that we all bring in order to maximize this opportunity for the benefit of us as a region, and that's why I'm excited about the opportunity to work with them in the form of a JPA, to get them involved. So I appreciate you letting me jump back onto this and have that. I just, I didn't, I didn't want to just let it go.
Welded up inside of you.
Yes.
And just to, and you're right, Kirk, that's not, I was only looking at it from the perspective of our board, but as I've said before, I certainly believe that, you know, there was a transaction that took place down in another jurisdiction a little while ago, a couple weeks back, but I think that the magnitude of the generation of work, generation of businesses over the long haul, this will pale in comparison to that if we can pull it off.
I agree.
And I normally, I always have my poker face on, but I am really excited about this, but knowing where it's been for the last 12 years, I know that we have some challenges to get through, but I will break later on down the road. I guarantee you that, so.
All right, just for the record, we're back on 12B. Supervisor Waggan has a comment.
Yeah, and I, you know, all of your comments are really well-taken, but I cannot pass up the opportunity to say I'm a little bit troubled by the delay and the timeframe by which it took you to make those comments, Kirk. I have never, in 19 years.
I'm slummed out of my.
I've never seen you hesitate to say anything. I just.
Mr. Chairman, and I think kind of in the spirit of reinforcing this because we have had conversations with Roseville where, as it regards to the PCCP, where we perhaps implied action that we think as a board we might have taken didn't show itself to be so clear on the record, and therefore there were additional questions from Roseville as to what our intent was. I would like us to actually move forward with a vote on this item to direct staff to prepare whatever would be necessary to engage the conversation with Roseville about the possibility of forming a JPA and actually affirmatively voice our support for inviting them to the table. I'd actually like it.
I'll second that. Okay, then we're going to.
So the motion is we're taking a vote on providing direction?
Yeah.
Right.
The question is that our board supports the idea of moving forward with a joint powers authority, which Roseville has a partner and another partner to be included, or should prove beneficial for the purpose of maximizing this wonderful opportunity to get to how this is.
You concur with that, second?
I second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to do whatever Kirk wants to do.
Well, if that's the case, let me expand my motion.
I think you've got the motion right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any objections, abstentions, or, okay.
I appreciate that. Can I leave now?
Okay, but don't go too far, just in case. Don't go.
Kirk, we're taking up your time. You've got a place to be, tea time with.
All righty, moving back to item 12C.
Allison again.
Yeah.
Oh, no worries. That's what I come to work for, this stuff. Anyway, very quickly, obviously, we're tracking on all these bills. Budget trailer bills are out, the state approved their budget. We were tracking specifically and a little disappointed on the cap and trade outcome of the $500 million. Notwithstanding the various opinions about AB 32 and how it's being implemented, we are still looking to be one of the jurisdictions who maximizes on getting any revenues out of that and look forward to participating in the fall. I did want to mention very briefly on the Affordable Care Act, and specifically on that implementation, I think it can't go without some acknowledgement, the extent to which work has been done to effect the outcome as it's represented in the actual budget because the, what's called the Tweener Counties, the 12 Counties, those with a clinic, there was a significant rigorous work effort by not only our Health and Human Services staff and CSAC staff, but specifically by Graham Canous to effect and carve a path by which there, we were better positioned here in Placer County. It's meaningful in the way of dollars that have been kept within the county. So I do want to note that, as I said, the budget bill contains provisions that, of course, the state will still take that $300 million that will limit the county, Placer County's take back of the 2011 realignment dollars due to the Affordable Care Act implementation, about $1 million of the county dollars. That's a vast improvement from where this was headed, and really do want to give that whole working group a huge applause because I think, and Graham is here to speak about it if you have more interest. Also, in that same budget that was approved, where we have the provision for, there were no longer, or not provision for, but there is no programmatic realignment, which we were concerned about, so that is no longer on the table. And there's two budget trailer bills that have implementation that, again, through the work of that group, we have a choice now in how we want to pay that million dollars, and your board has until December to determine how, which choice you want to take in that respect. So if there are more questions on that, Graham's here. But back to the two issues that are for action, the opposition to two labor bills. That would be AB 537 and AB 616. Specifically, staff is watching the pension-related, labor-related bills carefully, as your board has been expressly interested in these in the past. These two bills, we would just articulate best that we think that they do undermine the authorities of your board for negotiating processes and to control compensation for your employees. We think that they will increase some amount of time and therefore taxpayer costs and increase some bureaucracy and delays in labor negotiations. Specifically, 537 mandates mediation instead of relying upon the parties to determine that. Staff would also say that they take away or they don't allow non-binding tentative agreements by your board, but at the same time, they don't require the same kind of restriction for the other side. On 616, it brings PERB, the Public Employee Relation Board, into the determination for when there has been impasse, and that would be new provision, and we would suggest that those policies that would dictate how you accomplish those labor negotiations are addressed in the county and would not, they're not concerns particularly for how that's being worked through at the table. So Teresa Leonard's also here. If there's some questions with respect to that, then I cannot answer, but we would be looking for your concurrence with staff's recommendation that you would authorize opposition of those two bills. And that pretty much concludes my report unless you have some questions.
Any questions from board members? Anyone in the audience? All righty, we'll bring them back as the board concur with staff's recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 12C legislation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you. And now we will go back into closed session. The board will now adjourn to closed session for one item, a public employee performance evaluation for the county executive officer, and no reportable action will be taken. All right, thank you.